We welcome you this evening to our regular meeting. At this time, I call our meeting to order. We have with us this evening Reverend Ellen McCubbin. She is the new pastor at Hope Mills United Methodist Church. I welcome her. She is the pastor of my church, so I'm very proud that you're here this evening. If you all will, please rise for our invocation.
Let us pray. I'm gonna grow taller one of these days. Let us pray. Holy God, we give you thanks. We give you thanks for this town. We give you thanks, Lord, for Dorian heading back out to sea. We give you thanks for all our first responders and public works folks who had us ready should the storm come inland. Lord, we give you thanks for this place we live and our elected officials. Father, you have given us a great privilege to live here in what is the heart of America. So we ask your blessing on this meeting tonight, on those who lead it, grant them wisdom and knowledge, compassion, and grant us, your citizens of this town, the wisdom to work together that we may fulfill our vows as citizens. Thank you, Jesus, for all you have provided us with, for we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and you may be seated. At this time, I have one deletion from the agenda, and that would be discussion of the open meetings law. I did request this. However, at your seat, you do have the new updated guide that was sent from Governor Cooper along with Attorney General of North Carolina, so this will suffice for that information for you to read at your leisure. Are there any other additions or removals from our agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda with the deletion.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. The first thing on our agenda is a proclamation, and this is in observance of the 18th anniversary of the September 11th, 2001 attacks on America. We hereby adopt the following proclamation in tribute to those lost and injured on 9/11 and the many who gave of themselves in service to their communities and to this country in the aftermath of the attacks. Whereas people of all ages and walks of life across America and around the world collectively witnessed an event of immense tragedy on September 11th, 2001, and whereas September 11th, 2001 will never and should never be just another day in the hearts and minds of all Americans. Whereas the Patriot Day proclamation officially and permanently designated September 11th as a national day of service and remembrance, the flying of the flag of the United States at half-staff, as well as community service and charitable activities in tribute and remembrance. Now therefore, I Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim September 11th as a voluntary day of service and remembrance, and furthermore, call upon all citizens and organizations to consider joining in this observance and to engage in activities of tribute, solemn remembrance, and charitable service. The second I have a proclamation, and this is, whereas the service rendered the United States by the American Mother and Family is the greatest source of this country's strength and inspiration, whereas the American Mother and Family are doing so much for the moral and spiritual uplift of the people of the United States, and hence so much for good government and humanity, whereas American Gold Star Mothers and Families suffered the supreme sacrifices in the loss of their sons and daughters in wars and conflicts through the years, whereas on June 23rd, 1936, a joint congressional resolution designated the last Sunday in September as Gold Star Mothers' Day, and in 2011, President Barack Obama amended the day to Gold Star Mothers and Family Day. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim September 29th, 2019, as Gold Star Mothers and Family Day in the Town of Hope Mills, in tribute and urge all citizens to join in the expression of appreciation to the many Gold Star Mothers and Families in our community who have given so much on our behalf in times of both war and peace. Next, we have a presentation that I'm gonna move down to the podium so that I can go over it with the board. And I'm sorry, sorry, audience, I have my backs to you, but I'll be talking in the microphone and the screen is what we need to look at. And I need to get my other sheets, it's up there. If you're not aware, we have, our county is divided up into tiers, and it's based on different demographics and different things that require this designation as a tier. What has happened in Cumberland County is that we went from a Tier Two to now a Tier One, and a Tier One is not a good thing, and that's what we've been working on for almost a year. So I want to, I'll ask Mr. McLaughlin to move my screens for me. A typical agenda, I've got one up there of our meetings. We've met most recently, we meet once a month now, we met June 18th, August 20th and September 17th is our next meeting, and the reason why I needed to give this presentation tonight is to update our board, because the important thing now is for us to go out and tell our boards what we've been doing, and then what happens is the next step, if you can see, happened September 17th, and that would be before our next meeting. And so the idea was to all the boards in the county to get information prior to our next meeting. Also, the other good thing about this is our town clerk, Ms. Stalling, also sits on this committee with me. I asked if we could bring another member of our town staff, and it just was fitting because we had some other town or county clerks that were there that she could join also. Go to the next one. The tier team, this is what makes up the tier team. As you can see, the cities involved are Fayetteville, Hope Mills, and Spring Lake. Cumberland County is involved. Cumberland County citizens have been involved somewhat. The military, Fort Bragg has been at all our meetings, the private sectors, which will be realtors, Cape Fear Valley Health Systems has been there, Cumberland County Schools has been there, Cumberland County Workforce Development has been there, Fayetteville-Cumberland Economic Development has been there, Fayetteville State University, Fayetteville Tech Community College has been there, and anyone else involved in education, along with the North Carolina Department of Commerce. And the reason why I say that this is important is that you can see, thinking that if we want to improve our standing, that we need to improve how we communicate across the county, and also with all parties that have some type of interest in seeing that our county moves to the next level. So those are the ones that are involved, and, next slide. And the challenge that we had, and this is again, Cumberland County rated Tier One, which meant we are ranked 20 out of 100, or 118 out of 400 counties. One of the 40 most distressed counties in North Carolina, based on annual median household income, we're ranked 54 of 100 of the counties. Annual average unemployment rate, we're rated 21 of 100. Three-year population growth, 31 of 100, and annual property value per capita is 12 of 100. So in order for us to start looking at what has caused us to be dropped down to this Tier One ranking as a distressed county, we had to start looking at what can we do to improve those different types or those different categories. So we right now know that we have got an opportunity to shape our future, and what we're hoping we'll end up with is not only a framework to achieve and sustain Tier Three status, which is, you know, you would think Tier One would be the best, but Tier Three is actually the best. So we've got to work on how, what do we need to do to move us up, and that's where we are in what we've been working on. You go to the next one. This is showing you the counties that, and the different ratings. Now, the reason why I thought this was important for you to see is a lot, most of the Tier One counties where you would expect probably there'd be more as far as the different things that are needed, as far as better economy, better population growth, they're all along the 95 corridor. So that's the first thing we look at, is we've got access to people coming and going to raise our economic status, but what do we need to do to take advantage of that? So that was one thing, and what do we need to do to grow our tax base? And that again, in Cumberland County, we're growing very quickly in Hope Mills, and so is Spring Lake, but you look at the rest of the county, if you take Fayetteville out of it, what you're gonna find is it's a lot of rural areas and a lot of them that's not ready for economic development. So what we had to do is how, we were gonna have to build a community approach where the whole is greater than the sum of its parts, and that, I think, what is important is, Hope Mills was included in this primarily because we are the next largest city. Fayetteville is the largest, then Hope Mills, and then Spring Lake, and we have, of all three of those, we have the fastest-growing population. So it made only good sense that we would be included in this because along with that, we also have three of the largest high schools in our area, we have the largest elementary school in our area, and we also have the middle schools in our area that are fast-growing as far as enrollment. We also have the fastest-growing population in our area that ties into military, and that is either retirees or active-duty military that are coming here. So that ties into that military piece that's so important that we have input ourselves and also from them. And you can see that the idea was to have a common agenda for all of us. So as representing Hope Mills, I was there to speak up for Hope Mills, but at the same time to listen to all these other people and all these other groups so that we can make sure that we had input from them as far as we moving forward. Move forward. Talk about a bacteria, a single-cell organism. Now Colonel Anderson is gonna be here October 7th. Colonel Anderson is my seat buddy, he is also one of the main leaders of this group. And Colonel Anderson, what he works with right now, he's actually in Savannah at Workforce Development Conference, but what he brings to the table is his ties to the military. He had kids that graduated from Cumberland County Schools, and he's also right now works with Workforce Development. So he is sitting, he's one of my tablemates, and what he's going to do is come and bring this board, the information, as we bring it and do our press release, which is coming next. But he talks about, if you look at low-density bacteria, what happens is when they become high-density, and then when they get, multiply so quickly, then what happens is they call it a quorum sensing. In other words, they work together and they take over. So when we get a bad infection, they use this example for cancer and for other things. In other words, what happens is we've got to learn that we can solve things and we can work together to cause activity that would be good for the whole county, that we can't do it in isolation. And these are some ideas that have been brought forward that most of you aren't, and I wasn't aware, but right now, we have NIMIS, we have artificial intelligence being used, we have big data, we have modeling and simulation and visualization and immersion, and we also have robotics. And somebody's gonna say, well, where is all that happening? Fort Bragg. Fort Bragg right now is the model for the future because they're so far advanced. Most people don't realize, mine, me included, until you actually start looking at where they are with technology and where our best workforce could come from, and it would be out there as far as trained. We're gonna try to use our colleges and our universities and of course Fayetteville Tech, but what we're finding is they come out of the service when they either decide not to stay in, or when they retire with a lot of skills that we need to take advantage of, need to keep them here if possible. This is what we also are finding as far as economic development, that we've got to invest in human capital, we've got to have education and training, we've got to make sure that we look at the labor market, and we've got to invest in the future. And so those are the topics we've been talking about, and we'll move through this a little bit quicker so that they can see it. Again, this is the, this is the type of hours that are being replaced. If you look over here, you'll see that in 2018, that the human, look at the blue is the human hours, and then what's happening is the machine hours. Look by 2020, what's happening with human hours and the machine hours. So what we've got to do is make sure we've got our citizens, our humans, trained so that they can work with this type of technology because that's where we're heading. Tracking trends and anticipating tangents. This is again, this is all part of what we've been doing, and there'll be more brought to the board so that you can understand, but you have actually this presentation on your computer. And then what we're trying to figure out now is how are we gonna best take advantage of the trends, and that is again, we're working very closely with Fayetteville Tech, they're working very closely with our schools, so that we can promote this trend and making sure that we have skilled employees, which is gonna improve our workforce in our area. You can go and pass that one. And that's showing drones, we already are very familiar with drones, you go past that. And you can go past that. This is showing, this one here is showing growth over North Carolina averages, 5.3%. And you can see that in the red areas, there's, you're showing, all those are where we have a population decrease. Now, something I need to tell you is that if you look at our area, we have a population increase. Someone said that we're actually, a lot of the things that fit into Tier One for our county, Hope Mills does not have, but we're still part of the county, so we're gonna benefit from this identification because of the things that we can gain financially and also by different opportunities that are being brought to us. Right now, what we're doing is, we're working on strategic perspectives, we're focusing on our priorities, we're working together to manage conflicts, we have an innovative mindset, creating something new and different, and then we're getting things done by managing information, making timely decisions, and measuring progress. And these are the four groups that they've determined, that if we can put those puzzle pieces together as a county, then we can move forward. And they're showing the future next door, cybers, drones, robotics, data management, all of that is the U.S. Army, and again, that's where we can get our workforce from. Now, if you look at this, collective impact, coordinated impact, individual impact, nobody does anything. That means that nothing happens to us. So our continuum has to be that collective impact, we've got to work together, and work together as a whole county. Our strategic framework right now, we've come up with a vision, and that vision is, we seek to be a Tier Three county. The mission is essential task to realize our vision, the values or principles that guide our activities, priorities, objectives that provide focus, and the projects or actions that move us forward. And where we are right this point, you can move on up. You can see that what we've been doing, we've been, we've written, we're at this point, we've written a vision, we've got our mission in place, we've got our values in place, we've got our priorities that we're focusing on, and right now, we're trying to develop the projects, and that's where we'll be when we come back and meet September 17th. You can move on. And what's important is, all of these have been involved. Now, the question is, not everybody in this room has been involved. If you tried to bring everybody to the table, what would happen is you would, it would take us longer than it has taken us to get to this point. So there was a representative from Spring Lake, a representative from Hope Mills, a representative from Fayetteville, and then a representative from each of these other organizations, and we've ended up with a large group of people in the room as it stands. We're now bringing in people that have influence, say, over the homeless, people have influence with DSS, people that have influence more so with the hospital system, employment security. But the reason for that is we're expanding it, the Arts Council is in place there now. The idea was to add as we progress so that then we can, again, start dividing, deciding on the projects to improve and make our town or community better. We want, these are the things that we want to do, raise property values, lower unemployment rate, raise median household income, and increase population growth. Our goal is the quality of life in place. In other words, we wanna make our whole county better, wanna make it better for our students, better for our families, and better for the enticement of people and industry coming into Cumberland County. And again, our vision, become a Tier Three community of opportunity. Our mission is conduct economic development, community development, individual development, and strategic communication to advance quality of life in place. Our values, we know as a county are integrity, equity, collaboration, and opportunity. Our priorities right now, we know, are to attract industry, to recruit infrastructure and development, and career opportunities. We need better jobs so that our rate of salary goes up. What's happening now is we have a median income, we want to increase that. So in order to do that, we've got to use education, our workforce development sources. We want to reduce poverty. By that, we're gonna educate and hopefully help with individual development in areas that we can identify. And again, Hope Mills is outside of this range because we truly don't have an area that we can say is high poverty, like there are in Spring Lake and Fayetteville and some of the other areas, but we fit into this category because the median household income here, based on all that are working, is not as high as they think it should be for our area. Projects, economic, community, individual, and strat combo. In other words, what we're looking at now is, on September 17th, we'll have framework input, we'll start looking at the strategic update. In other words, what can we do immediately to advance Cumberland County? What can our school systems do? We're addressing those needs. And then what we'll have after this next meeting is we'll have an actual input from the public. In other words, we'll present what we've come up with as a big group, and we'll ask then for us to have, for the whole group to have input for all the citizens of Cumberland County that will come and attend. Our goal, again, is to get us out of this bottom ranking of a distressed county and to do anything we can do to promote our students to have a better education, to be involved in our community, and to retain those people that are here. We don't want kids graduate from high school, going to college, and not coming back. That's one of our focuses. We also don't want the military that are highly skilled to find a reason to leave here. We want to make sure that we have opportunities for them, which could mean high-paying jobs. I'll conclude with that, but I do want you to know that this has been very worthwhile for me to be a part of this. We started meeting as soon as we got the designation that we were a Tier One county, and the source of this, actually, Mayor Colvin in Fayetteville brought this first group together, and then what happened is Darswell Rogers and Colonel Anderson moved forward with starting working on the strategic planning. So we'll be having good news back, when we come back on October 7th, because Colonel Anderson will actually come and give us the update on what is accomplished on this next meeting. So I thank you for your attention, and this is good news that we're part of this because I believe Hope Mills is gonna benefit because there's all sorts of grant and funding opportunities with this designation. We don't have to jump through as many hoops when you're already designated that you're at the bottom. You get a head start on those other counties. So thank you.
Mayor, may I comment on the slides?
Yes, sir.
We're in week four, that we just started our new semester at Fayetteville Technical Community College, and as a faculty member, myself and Dr. Kenwanna McCray, who's sitting back there, we've seen exceptional growth with our enrollment. Out of 58 community colleges throughout North Carolina, there's only three of us that have increased growth or maintaining our growth, and we are one of the three in the entire state. And I wanted to share those numbers because many of our students live and work in our community. They are members of our community. They are veterans, they are spouses, they are family members, and they all live or believe that the quality of life in Cumberland County is definitely a plus and an option for them. That's why they chose to stay here, that's why they're coming to the community college. So yes, Mayor, this is on target, and we're seeing it in a robust enrollment registration at our campus, and I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have our manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'm just Board of Commissioners. We are extremely thankful that the effects from Hurricane Dorian were minimal. We were prepared for the worst and hoping for the best. I'd like to thank Mark Brown, Senior Customer Programs Officer with PWC, and David McNeil, the District Manager with Duke Energy, for their personal contact with me prior to the hurricane. And I also want to personally thank all of our department heads and our first responders for the actions that were taken to mitigate the effects of Hurricane Dorian. We experienced some leaking in the new roofing of the Parks and Recreation Center. This will be addressed through the warranty on the new roof. We have notified the contractor. Rockfish Road sidewalk project, the recent traffic control plan for this project was rejected by NC DOT. McGill is working with Hughes Construction to come up with an alternate traffic control plan so that the construction process can begin. Johnson Street sidewalk project, this project is still being reviewed by COSX. Mark Landis with Schnabel Engineering was scheduled to be in the area on Friday, September 6th, the day after Hurricane Dorian, to inspect another project he is involved with in the area. He came by and did a visual inspection of the dam and was very pleased with how it's performing. Public Works will install erosion control measures, a geotechnical fabric and riprap at the end of the bulkhead as soon as the weather becomes cooler. We are waiting for the surveyor to schedule a date to conduct a survey of the former golf course property in order to move ahead with the design of the driveway entrance and parking lot. The Fountain Lane House, Public Works is proceeding with creating specifications in order to obtain bids for demolition. Trade Street Museum update, Public Works Director Don Cisco plans to attend a Historic Preservation Commission meeting on Wednesday, September 11th, to review with the members some suggested minor revisions to the renovations due to the plumbing and electrical features. Parish House update, as of today, Monday, September 9th, we have not received the report on the parish house from Mark Langenship of Lysick Associates. Heritage Park Master Planner, a public kickoff meeting involving the Historic Preservation Commission, Appearance Commission, Lake Advisory Committee, and the Parks and Rec Committee, and the public is scheduled for Thursday, September 26th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Parks and Recreation Center. Update on the Rockfish and Seaway Collier flooding issue. On August 29th, town staff met with Cumberland County, Cumberland County Schools, and NC DOT. The meeting was to follow up after the soil samples were taken and get an update from all parties. Town staff reviewed the soil sample results and notified all parties that even though the infiltration rates are good, the seasonal high-water table is too high for any type of infiltration device to work on school grounds. NC DOT updated that the lead date of the project, which was currently scheduled for the year 2024, was subject to change due to the current funding issues and priority ranking. Cumberland County and Cumberland County Schools had no updates in reference to flooding. As NC DOT is still in the planning phase for this particular area, and until a plan is finalized, they feel any temporary solution would be cost prohibitive for all parties. Town staff is reaching out to NC DOT to ask that they reditch the area along Rockfish Road in front of the school and the surrounding property. The ADA Transition Program, with Stewart Incorporated. Staff is in the process of completing self-assessments for facilities and programs to be submitted to Stewart. The new carpet for town hall has been installed, all but a few offices. They will return this weekend to finish the installation. Code enforcement, Aaron Rents was contacted regarding sign flags, flag signs, and temporary banners that are in violation of the sign ordinance. They have since been removed. Secure care public storage was issued a formal zoning violation for the display of U-Haul trucks along Hope Mills Road. The notice of violation gives them 30 days to come into compliance, which will include the requirement of a site plan approval to store them on their own property. The 30-day notice requires them to remove the trucks permanently from the current location. A homeowner and Thompson Circle community was contacted regarding a damaged fence that violates the zoning ordinance in regards to fencing required when a swimming pool is located in the rear yard. The fence was damaged as a result of a weather event, and the homeowner's insurance policy is funding the repairs. Staff will continue to coordinate with the homeowner until it's brought into compliance. Sketch Plan Reviews, sketch plan, the plan review staff has two sketch plan reviews scheduled for this Thursday, September 12th. The first review is for a proposed development of the recently approved 77-acre industrial development located off of Corporation Drive. The second review is for a proposed collision repair development- The second review is for a proposed collision repair development at the intersection of Camden and Elk Road, which is located in Hope Mills MIA. Staff is setting up the review in anticipation of the submittal of an annexation petition. Staff is also coordinating with the developers of a recently approved Waffle House at Trademore Village for a sketch plan review as well. However, a date has not been finalized. Current developments that have been approved by the board that are being reviewed for building permit issuance are as follows. Biscuitville at 2659 Hope Mills Road, Circle K Chickenfoot Road, Circle K South Main Street, and Chick Filet on Main Street. The inspections Department was recently inspected by the Insurance Services Office Incorporated, ISO. Generally, an inspection is conducted every five years. The ISO is an insurer-supported organization with the primary mission of providing advisory, underwriting, and rating information to insurers. The Building Code Effectiveness Rating Scale is 1 to 10, with 1 being the highest and 10 the lowest rating. This Building Code Effectiveness Rating Schedule is only an insurance underwriting and informational tool. Chief Building Inspector Ray Reeves has received notification that the resulting Building Code Effectiveness Rating Classification is 3 for 1 and 2 family residential property and a 3 for commercial and industrial property. The town has recently been notified by Grants Manager Margot Jarvis that we have been awarded the $2,500 Fayetteville Cumberland County Arts Council Grant for the creation of the UNCP art sculptures, and we received the check today. The town would like to recognize and thank Ms. Peddicke Carter for her recent donation to the Historic Preservation Commission. Her donation was made in memory of Matty Hall. The town would also like to recognize and thank Sally Bailey for the beautiful floral arrangement that she had commissioned for the back lobby. And that concludes my manager's summary.
Thank you, ma'am. We have no public hearings. Next, we have public comments, and I have to read for you. Each speaker is asked to limit the comments to three minutes, and the total comment period should not be 30 minutes or less. Citizens should have signed up with the town clerk to speak prior to the start of the meeting, and please direct comments to the full board, not to an individual board member or staff member. Although the board is interested in hearing your concerns, speakers should not expect board action or deliberation on subject matter brought up during the public comment segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And we have tonight, the first on our agenda is Bill McQueen. And if you'll come to the microphone, give your address, and then you have three minutes.
I'm William McQueen. I live at 5903 Hunting Ridge Road, Hope Mills. I'm here tonight to express my concerns with certain activities as reflected within this night's agenda. What has provoked me to this present concern is the agenda with specific attention to the discussion of the MOU, or Memorandum of Understanding, for the new planned walking trail. I have seen comments addressed without naming names, but it's in the agenda, informing the individual that owners would not sign any MOU and their desire not to be contacted about it anymore. This was emailed on or about August 11th, 2019. Further within the note, it was noted, or is noted, and I quote, "This should be the end of discussion regards this matter and to cease all further activities." In my opinion, the town and the commissioners and others acting on behalf of the town may have committed a felony, strong-arm tactics. How many times does a citizen of this great country have to say no? No means no. I come by that little part from another individual that I won't name tonight, but it's out there on the record, and I'm sure, if you choose or care to follow up, I'd be happy to provide additional information. I've heard what I will now call rumors that a certain ex-commissioner has personally visited the property on numerous occasions and acting as a representative for the town, attempted to persuade the owners to see the MOU in a more positive light in lieu of less favorable outcomes should they continue to hold their ground and not sign the agreement. My understanding, he was told, not to return to the property. Besides the above, I do not see the priority of investing an additional $24,000-plus into one-year MOU plus the $4,800 to the owner. For what? Why are some people so interested in building this trail or pressuring by intimidation these owners? That's my interpretation, and I think I freely can do that. For what? Perhaps the local government commission can get some answers to a citizen's questions. I have no confidence that this issue will be addressed with clarity tonight. More likely, I'm starting to see a need for an inquiry by the State Attorney General. Who prepared this MOU? It does not appear to be very professionally prepared by an attorney-at-law. We have professional staff employed by the town that, in my opinion, should have been at the forefront of this situation instead of commissioners attempting to handle this process. Did we not just spend approximately $28,000 to learn how to better communicate and perform public business?
Sir, I have to ask you to, that's, you've had three minutes. Thank you.
In the words of President Obama, "Come on, man."
I'm sorry. Three minutes is the limit.
Mr. McQueen, if you'll stick around, I'll have all your answers for you.
I will. But I'd like to share it with the whole community.
Oh, definitely will.
Elizabeth Cooper, also known as Beth Cooper, 4413 Goldenrod Court, Parkton, North Carolina, 28371, but I am a resident of Hope Mills. So, I also am concerned about this MOU for a rental of a parking lot. We have plans that have already been beat to death for the heritage park and the lake and every other thing that should be the priority in completing. But instead, we're focusing on a walking trail that doesn't currently exist, a half-mile from a walking trail that does exist and people use every single day. How is this a priority? This is yet another effort by people to waste town money, to waste taxpayers' money. You want to spend this money so badly? Why aren't we spending money to have early election places here in Hope Mills? We could do it on Saturday, the October 19th and October 26th for a cost of $3,000, which is significantly less than the $5,000 you're about to discuss tonight. And in doing so, you would enable the residents of this town to be able to do one-stop voting. The veterans and the veterans' families who are new to the community but meet the requirements to vote in the community, they could then go to early voting and get their one-stop stuff done. But no, you would rather spend this money on a walking trail less than a half-mile from another walking trail that we already have. How does that make any sense? You choose not to support your citizenry's right to get out the vote. Instead, you're only interested in spending money for plans that aren't even done, and you have plans that are done that you're not spending money or doing anything with. You're just kicking the can down the road. I don't understand what the purpose is. It's not even a half-mile from the trail that's right here. Why would you spend this money? I encourage you to call Terry Robertson, like I did today, and find out a little bit more about opening an early voting location here on the property of the municipal complex so that our citizens have more opportunities to express their desires.
Start Clark. Next, we have Sue Moody.
Hi, my name is Susan Moody. I live at 3647 Lake Forest Road in Hope Mills, North Carolina. We used to have a quiet little hometown. It drew many of us here and have kept many of us that were born and raised in Hope Mills here. Our Fourth of July Parade, our Homecoming Parade, Santa coming across the lake as carolers merged at the gazebo for the Festival of Light. This is just a taste of what made Hope Mills a great community to live in and to raise our family. But now, I'm asked, what's going on in Hope Mills? Why is everyone going through and everything is so negative? When you hear Hope Mills in the community anymore in Cumberland County, they laugh at us. Why are we being censured? Why is everyone censuring each other? Why are they going on the radio and trashing the other elected for a situation that's already been settled at taxpayer cost of almost $30,000? And now, now we have movers and shakers taking it upon themselves to take initiatives that were not authorized by the board to do so. Talk about personal agendas? Personal initiatives is personal agendas. We all have a place in our community. Citizens elect commissioners and the mayor, and they become our board. The board sets policies as supported by the citizens who elected them. The board hires a staff to enact the policies as directed by them in public meetings. These public meetings are the citizens' rights to know what's going on and who is responsible. The golf course will cost almost $100,000 if it becomes ADA compliant, as indicated in a previous meeting. Has this money been allocated? This board runs down every rabbit hole it sees. I'm encouraging you tonight to stop spending my tax money helter-skelter without a plan. It's my understanding that we're in the process of developing a strategic plan. No more money spent, not until you've gone through and heard that strategic plan, you've worked on that strategic plan, you've approved that strategic plan. No more personal agendas, no more personal initiatives acted upon without prior approval of the board. Stop disgracing us among my community. Stop with your personal vendettas. How about doing something positive to show your pride in all of our town?
Next, we have Joanne Scarrola.
Joanne Scarrola. My address is 5429 Archer Road in Hope Mills. Last time I spoke to the board, we spoke about leadership and integrity and stuff like that, and ignoring the negative press and the articles and the cowards that write these articles acting childish by calling people out. Now, the very next day after I spoke to the board, there was another smear campaign in the paper, written by spouse, smearing the commissioners. When I approached the person's spouse about, you know, why all of a sudden after my conversation, again, you know, smearing is continuing, they said they had no idea about it. But now we see these emails coming out with a certain writer for Up and Coming, and the whole integrity thing is out the window again. Like, where's the integrity again? It's like, why should I believe anything you have to say? You know, I have this note, because I was so impressed by having this sent. I told my mom about it, talking about leadership and discipline, but then you turn around and lie. And then when people ask you questions, you're afraid to answer them to their face. So what's the point of even serving on a board if you can't talk to a person to your left or to your right and say how you feel? But you don't know, oh, no, I'm fine. I'm fine about everything. No, it's a crock. It's a crock. And I'm struggling not to curse right now, so you should be very, very proud. But it's like, you know, it's a military value. It's a value, period. You talk about all this stuff and, you know, discipline and values, integrity for the community. But if you can't hold that value to heart, when you're talking about your fellow board members, what the hell's the point of being on the board? You know, there's election coming up. You know, I was going to vote for some people, but when integrity is out the door, why the hell should I vote for you? And I'm disappointed. I'm so disappointed, because, you know, it's a disappointment overall. Forty-four seconds, all right. I want more for this community, but if you can't trust your board members, who the hell can we turn to? Remarks complete.
Thank you. Next, we have, where'd you start it? Next, we have Rod McLean.
Rod McLean, 5435 Fountain Lane. I was in attendance at your workshop for the tree ordinance. I am somewhat involved in the tree ordinance. And I would like to remind the members of this board and the members of any other board that happens to follow. This town gives stuff away. When you give it away, you cannot get it back. You cut down a 30-inch tree or a 15-inch tree, and under landscaping, you put back a six-foot sapling. How many of you would replace the town manager with a second grader just because she left? Well, we lost all that experience. We lost all this other stuff. Oh, but we replaced it with a second grader? And you're saying, oh, cut down all the trees. You can replace five of those trees with a six-foot sapling. You can't. You cannot. The oaks we've got in this town right now, we need to keep them. We do not need to lose them. They wanted to cut them down up there on Main Street. Oh, we'll have to move all those, otherwise we can't build anything. Then don't build anything. Keep it as green space. We don't need every inch of Main Street to be commercial. We are losing trees in this town at a very rapid rate. And in case any of you have not noticed on the national news, there's a little country down in South America called Brazil. They have a little tiny wood down there called the Amazon. It is disappearing. The 23 acres we lost on Fountain Lane took away enough carbon dioxide as produced by three buses, I believe. It also took away the possibility of providing enough oxygen for 25 people to live for a year. You can't replace it. So on your tree ordinance, please make absolutely sure you keep what we have. Do not give it to a stupid damn developer who just wants more money in his pocket. And we all know who they are. And they'll come here and they'll cry, "You're making life so difficult for me." Yes, make it difficult for them. We live here. Most of them don't, and those that claim that they do, they don't care. They're going to take every damn tree unless you stop it. Thank you.
Next, we have Gurley Mitchell.
Good afternoon, good evening. Gurley Mitchell, 4056 William Belutha Drive. Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, Town Staff, and Citizens. Discussion of the request for Bill Bowman's emails. Discussion of the request for Bill Bowman's emails. This is an item that has been addressed before. Why are we going down discussing these same emails again? There's no need to. If you're gonna address emails, address every email that Bill Bowman has sent to everybody. It's just a fair thing, the right thing to do. We're not looking for half-truth. We want the whole truth, the facts and the information. Looking backwards is moving backwards. We need to move forward. It's enough already. This Board has wasted enough of the people's time. Why don't we take this time to commend our town staff? And those of you that sit up on that Board that is doing a good job, that's doing the good things in this community, the things that make this community a great community, the young people that we see that's out here doing the things that they do, four teams that went to the championship. We need to commend those individuals. We need to embrace the goodness of this town instead of continually, continually, continually going down the same old street, like you just said, kicking the can down the road. If there's a decision to be made, do your own research, make your own decisions. Enough already. It's time to move forward. There's an election coming. If you want to be up there, show that you want to be up there. Give us what we need, the truth, nothing but the whole truth, the facts and nothing but the facts. That's all I want. Let me make my own decisions. But all I need from you all is what's really going on based on the facts. It is time to stop the blame game. You lead, follow, or get out the way. Leadership is an art. Management is a process. Choose which one you want to be. Choose which one that you are gonna do. But I'm telling you right now, you can't do it if you're not working together, deciding together, discussing together in harmony. It's not gonna happen. Too many times, we waste time because we refuse to work together. All it takes is one, to bridge the gap. Make the right choices, right decisions, others will follow. It's not a difficult or hard process. Work together. That's all we need. That's all the people want. The young people say all the time, "I'm not voting. I'm tired of all the negativity," especially nationwide, especially in this community. Let's fix the problem. Let's do what we need to do. Let's embrace one another. Let's work together. I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mitchell, these emails were not given to this Board until August 5th, 2019. We'd never seen them. They've never been seen by the Board. So they're not going, they're not going, yeah. That's what we requested on this one.
All.
Yes.
Next, we have our consent agenda. The items on our consent agenda, if there's anything you'd like moved, we can do so and move it to new business. Consideration of approval of regular meeting minutes from August 19th, 2019. Consideration of approval of closed session minutes, meetings, meeting minutes from July 15th, 2019. Resolution 2019-18, acceptance of the donation of personal property to the Hope Mills Police Department. The U.S. Military Law Enforcement Support Program has donated an Ashgosh MATV with a value of $767,360 at no cost to the town. Consideration of authorizing the town manager to execute an interlocal agreement with the Cumberland County Board of Education. Hope Mills Parks and Recreation shall provide athletic and recreational program and routine maintenance at Hope Mills Middle, Southview Middle, Southview High and Baldwin Elementary, Seaway and Collier Elementary and Rockfish Elementary Schools. Maintenance costs are included in current budget. Consideration of authorizing the town manager to execute a jet-rotting contract for continuous annual storm drain maintenance, the amount of $30,000 and is included in the current budget. Is there anything that you'd like moved to new business? If not, to have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next item under old business is case number P17-45. Rezoning of 10.42 plus or minus acres from R6A Residential to CP Planned Commercial or to a more restrictive zoning district located on the east side of Service Lane, Service Road 1138, Appleberry Lane, across the intersection of Cumberland Bay Drive, submitted by Albert Norton Jr. on behalf of Old Bluff LLC. And I turn this over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Hello, Madam Mayor. As stated, this is case P1745. This is actually a reconsideration of a request from R6A to CP. As it relates to background information, the portion of the property under consideration is 3.22 acres in size and is currently ex-owned under R6A Residential District. This portion was previously considered for a rezoning request to CP Planned Commercial as a part of an overall 10.42-acre parcel, but was denied by the Board of Commissioners on December 11th, 2017. The 7.20 acres of the previous request is located outside the Town of Hope Mills limits and was approved for rezoning to CP by the Cumberland County Commissioners on the same evening. This 7.2-acre portion fronts 878 feet along Appleberry Lane and remains vacant, as does this portion, under consideration this evening. As it relates to the area under consideration, there is commercial zoning on all sides as three parcels to the immediate southwest owned by the same property owner were recently approved for a CP zoning by the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners on August 19th, 2019. At that same meeting, the Board of Commissioners voted to reconsider this current request to commercial zoning. This is the existing zoning map. The subject property is outlined in yellow. As you can see, this is basically, this is behind the existing Circle K development off of Cumberland and Hope Mills Road. As such, the existing land use does reflect the existing zoning makeup. This is your MIA analysis. If you look at the big, bold line, that is the Town of Hope Mills limits. Everything to the right of the screen is inside of Town of Hope Mills limits. As you can see, the subject property outlined in yellow is located inside the town. But everything to the left of that line, and specifically the area in brown, that is the 7.2-acre portion approved by the county. That's in the current MIA of the Town of Hope Mills. This is an aerial view. Subject property is outlined again in yellow. Subject property again outlined in yellow. There are no hydric or hydric inclusion soils located near the property. This is your existing water sewer. There is existing sewer directly available to the subject property. Water is located off of Appleberry, Cumberland and Hope Mills Road. These are site photographs. I just put a couple of these in here. These are the same ones from the last time it was heard. And in terms of your land use policy compliance, the 2030 Growth Vision Plan calls for urban for this development. The southwest Cumberland land use recommendation is for mixed use and heavy commercial. Staff recommendation is for approval. Cumberland County Joint Planning Board recommend approval on November 21st, 2017. And the motions for the Hope Mills Commissioners, they're located in your packets. I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions for Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes and no. I don't know which way to answer it or ask it. Is this part of the same deal that came up for approval the same night that Fayetteville-Cumberland heard it?
Well, technically, as I stated in the presentation, the county approved, it was initially a 10.22-acre parcel. The county approved their portion, but this portion that you guys wanted to come back, this is the remaining portion that wasn't approved, which is why the request is still to rezone from R6A to commercial.
Does a member of the prevailing side have to make a motion? Or since it's been six months, can any member of the Board make a motion?
I think the reason why you guys brought it back was to stop the applicant from having to refile. That period, that one-year period has passed.
And you all brought it back, and it has been, it's been over a year.
Yeah.
December 17th last year.
Yeah.
In that case, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion in case P17-45 that we approve the rezoning from R6A Residential to CP Planned Commercial and find it is consistent with the adopted southwest Cumberland land use plan which calls for mixed use and heavy commercial developments at this location. Mixed use allows for retail and commercial uses and further find that approval of the request is reasonable and in the public interest because all uses allowed within the R6A district are not suitable for gateway into the town. In addition, approval will allow for increased commercial development of property under the same ownership and located at a major intersection.
Have a motion. Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Most of the property in the area is gonna be commercial anyway. It's designated that now, so I agree with Mr. Mitchell that we should go ahead and do this.
Okay. So if you have any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, then it is approved. Next on our agenda is new business, and this is case number 18-020. Consideration of Nicky Gray Site Plan Review. Hope Mills Zoning Ordinance, Zone CP, acreage .43 acres, located at 3121 North Main Street and its Highway 59. It was submitted by Nicky Gray Developer.
Again, as stated, this is a site plan approval request. This is an aerial photograph. Subject property is highlighted in yellow. As it relates to the background information, the subject property is addressed as 3121 North Main Street, and it is a 0.43-acre site that fronts approximately 70 feet along the northeastern side of North Main Street. The site is currently developed with a single-story vacant commercial structure and provides for a total of eight existing parking spaces. The subject property is regulated under the CP Planned Commercial District and was previously operated as a thrift store. In terms of proposed improvements, the applicant is proposing to utilize a vacant commercial structure and site for motor vehicle sales within the area in the rear proposed for a vehicular outdoor display. As the rear of the property is adjacent to residential zoning, a vegetative buffer is proposed along the rear property line. This is a copy of the site plan. Staff recommendation is for approval.
Is that display area, is that dirt? Is that pavement?
I think that's gravel.
Gravel?
Yeah. This lot has changed over several times. If you recall, it was that thrift store that used to have the big red dragon in front of it. But they're not proposing anything, any additional construction. They're just utilizing the existing structure to operate the office for the vehicle display. But they are locating the cars in the back.
Any discussion? Any other questions for Mr. McLaughlin? Action.
I'll make a motion to approve case number 18-020, site plan.
I have a motion to approve site plan 18-020. All those in favor, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Thank you. Next is consideration of amendment to the Town of Hope Mills subdivision ordinance tied to sidewalk requirements in residential subdivisions. And I'll turn this over to Mr. McLaughlin.
This is something that you guys wanted us to work on. At the August 5th Board Meeting, you guys directed staff to explore language that would amend the Hope Mills subdivision ordinance to alleviate some redundant issues tied to sidewalks in our residential subdivision ordinance. Currently, our ordinance requires sidewalks on both sides of the street on new residential subdivisions, but it does not address issues related to new group developments that are approved in existing residential subdivisions that were approved without requirement of sidewalks. The issue is tied to the fact that there are several subdivisions under construction at Hope Mills that were approved prior to the most recent amendment to the subdivision ordinance. As many of these planted lots are currently under construction, any creation of a group development within these subdivisions will require sidewalks when the entire development may not, may have been approved without them. As such, staff is proposing the following language to be added for consideration to the subdivision ordinance. It will go in section 86A-45A1A. No new sidewalks will be required for group developments within already approved subdivisions that were initially approved without the requirement of sidewalks. This is not an amendment to the language. It's just additional language we add in. If you recall, this is related to that development in Preserve at Lake Upchurch where the entire subdivision was approved without sidewalks. But based on the enforcement of these regulations, they're required to put it in for about a 60-foot arc where there are no sidewalks in the entire area. So this does clean up that issue. We've had extensive conversations with the planning board. This does require the approval of the joint planning board. So staff is asking for consideration to send this language to the county to actually have it amended into the subdivision ordinance.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Do you answer, this requires a motion?
Yes.
Unless someone has a discussion, I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Okay, have a motion. Any discussion?
Yes, I ask for it to be put on there because I think it's ridiculous that some existing neighborhood has put up sidewalks nowhere.
And the issue was that based on the language, I had no authority to even... So it's not that I didn't agree with it. I just didn't have the authority to do it. But this is the best way to stop it from happening again.
What's fairness issue? It's consistency issue?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yep, both of them.
Okay. Have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next on our, for new business, is consideration of a request to execute a memorandum of understanding with North Carolina Commerce for a study of the Hope Mills Municipal Influence Area. The estimated cost is $2,077 and is currently budgeted.
All right. Town Hope Mills staff held a coordination meeting on August 15th, 2019 with the North Carolina Commerce Main Street and Rural Planning Department. The purpose was to engage them in assisting with the Strategic Economic Development Initiative in the Hope Mills Municipal Influence Area. The effort, which also includes Cumberland County Planning Staff, Fayetteville-Cumberland Economic Development Corporation, PWC, NCDOT, and representatives of the Cumberland County Joint Planning Board, has an overall goal of conducting a local and regional market analysis that includes small area planning for high-impact areas along the proposed route of the 295 Outer Loop. Other focus areas include South Main and Exit 41 with an objective of a coordinated proactive approach at analyzing the economic viability of the areas in our MIA that will ultimately be developed as a result of the completion of the Outer Loop. The NC Commerce team has agreed to lead these efforts of conducting a strategic plan and gateway study and is requesting the execution of this resolution of support and memorandum of understanding. The overall initiative would be led or facilitated by NC Commerce with the assistance of a coalition of teams created by town staff with completion started target for June 2020. I think you have in your package not only the budget that outlines the $2,077 request, but the outline of, I think, seven meetings that are gonna facilitate, the first of which will be a tour of our MIA areas.
I appreciate them bringing it before us. Mayor and I sit on that coalition, both staff members as well as the county staff. We appreciate Betty sitting in when she did. I'll make a motion to approve that request.
I have a motion to approve the request for a memorandum of understanding with North Carolina Department of Commerce. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next on our agenda is consideration of authorizing the town manager Adams to execute a contract and adoption of budget amendment 2019-21-2020, number one. This is to provide electrical repair to the Episcopal Church at a cost of $5,900. The budget amendment includes previously requested tree removal next to parish house in the amount of $3,750 for a total of $9,650. Anything that...
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to table this issue, and here's why. We haven't heard, or at least we haven't been briefed, about the Oatman's family request about... about naming the building or something regarding the church. There's been some discussion about it, but there's been no further update on the family's request. And I just feel like that we need to resolve that before we expend nine thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars that's not currently budgeted into a building without resolution. So I would like to make a request that the Oatmans' request be sent to the Historic Commission, Preservation Commission, for their recommendations back to the board on what Mr. Oatman and his family would like to see with the Episcopal Church property. That's the reason why I want it tabled.
If I could.
Sir?
The Oatmans, I thought, just asked for a proclamation recognizing their family and the history involving the naming of the first mill and becoming the Town of Hope Mills, and that was done about two meetings ago.
It was.
I don't recall. Oatman's asking for any buildings to be named, but maybe it was in there, if you recall.
The one.
The one?
Okay.
The one that was holding out, but I think the one that was...
Yeah, holdout had, um, when we did that proclamation and sent it forward, he emailed Attorney Hartzog, I believe, and said that that was not sufficient.
Okay.
That he would like something more permanent. So that's where we are with it right now.
And did Hartzog, did he not say that basically it's really up to us in the end what we find sufficient? I mean, we are the majority owner, so we are doing what the initial wishes were of the family, and we just have that one heir that's holding out. So, but he said it really wasn't, is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, it's totally up to the board as to how you wish to proceed with this.
Yes, sir.
I hope I don't say nothing that's wrong here, but I don't believe there's anything that we can say right now that won't come back to haunt us in one shape, form, or the other. Whether it has to do with the naming of the building, or the misnaming of the building, or whatever it might be, but I think we ought to try to do our best to keep things in perspective, if that makes any sense.
And let me just rephrase that. In his eyes, that Mr. Russ, Bruce, how do you pronounce his name? Bruce, the lone holdout, he indicated to Attorney Hartzog that he didn't feel that it was sufficient, what we had proposed. So it's totally up to you all how you plan to proceed.
Have we talked to any of the other owners?
They've signed up.
They've all signed up.
He's the only, he's the only one that has not given his portion of the...
How many have there?
Six. Six, yeah.
Five to one's the majority.
So we own five, six of the building.
Oh, what I'm asking, Mayor, is that we send his request to, to the Historic Preservation Commission for their input. That's all I'm asking.
I think they, didn't they come back and say that they were going to do the, a section in the museum dedicated to that family? I think that's what they, their recommendation was.
And a storyboard?
A storyboard, yes, of dedicated to the family's history.
But I think that wasn't sufficient for him.
That was in the, in the resolution.
Yeah, but that wasn't sufficient for Mr. Oatman.
Preservation Commission had recommended.
I don't know, Mr. Oatman. And that's the reason why we have committees. This would be an opportunity for the committee to address it and bring back a recommendation so we can move forward with this budget amendment. That's just my fault.
Yes, ma'am.
With all the money we've already expended and everything, I would rather, I'm with Commissioner Bellflower, is I think we should wait until we have this a hundred percent before we invest any more money in it, just in case something did fall back on it. I would rather be a hundred percent sure than maybe ninety percent sure. So I go along with Commissioner Bellflower.
Any other discussion? So we have a motion on the floor to
Table.
Table this. Okay, so, and that's made...
That the Historic Preservation Commission give a recommendation on naming the building itself.
And all the correspondence that, from Mr. Oatman, be shared with the committee for them to make a recommendation and to include if they need to contact Mr. Oatman directly.
Okay.
And, and bring back a, a recommendation. I don't see any problem with that either.
Okay, but be Mr. Roos, Mr. Roos, Mr. Oatman's relative.
I would say it's lay it on for the Historical Committee, Preservation Commission, that their, their will is to move forward and to stop the damage to that building as soon as possible yesterday, and it's a sad, sad thing that's happened over these years. And we own five, six of anything, we own the majority. And I'm sorry, a majority owner makes the decisions in any entity.
Your commission's meeting Wednesday night this week, correct? Am I right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Copy, Madam Mayor.
All right, all those, the motion is to table this until such time as the Historical Commission can have input, and they do have a meeting on Wednesday evening. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, so it's a three to two, so it will be tabled until the Historical Commission can bring back a recommendation. Next on our agenda is consideration and possible action relating to memorandum of understanding for the golf course parking lot in the amount of four thousand eight hundred dollars, and this was recommended by Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell. So I guess, Mayor Pro Tim, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I'd like to clear the air. Your commissioners are elected to talk about what may be in this town, not what will be. We collectively, as a board, talk about what will be or won't be, but everybody likes going to surge trampoline, I suppose. I got a phone call on a Thursday before Veterans Day from Mayor Warner. She asked me to poll all my fellow commissioners to see if we could open up surge trampoline business for, for Veterans Weekend. There was no time for a meeting. In fact, our second meeting in November, I believe, was canceled, so they would have had to wait, unless we would have had a special meeting, surge trampoline would have had to wait to sometime in December, the first week in December, to open up. So I polled each commissioner individually, and we also put it on the agenda at the next meeting. So I apologize for opening up surge with my fellow team here a month ahead of schedule and doing something good for the community. Now, you want to put me in jail for that? Have at it. If you want to call that a felony, have at it, but you'll have to arrest everybody at this board, including your mayor, because she's the one that made a request of me. Second issue, you like dirtbag ales? I had a young lady show up in my office. I didn't know who she was. She, one of the owner's wives, she was in tears. This was on a Thursday. She said, "Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell, I know you don't know me, but we are in desperate help. We're going to have to close this business down if you don't intercede." I said, "Ma'am, what can I do to help you?" She said that we annexed them in the middle of the process of inspection process. I said, "Okay." She said, "We would like to go back to the county to finish the inspection process, and then we will gladly accept anything the Town of Hope Mills wants to do after the inspection process is over." But they were already annexed by the Town of Hope Mills. I called Town Manager Adams, I called my fellow elected immediately. Town Manager Adams didn't think there was much we could do based on information she had at hand. I called Town Attorney Hartzog. He said, "Mayor Pro Tim, if you can give me about fifteen minutes, I think I can get this resolved with the county attorney." Twenty minutes later, I get a phone call from Attorney Hartzog. He said, "We are good to go. The county has agreed to take back over an inspections process." Attorney to attorney, again, no felony, no crime committed, and we put it on the agenda that Monday night. Had she not showed up, she would have had to wait as well, like surge trampoline, till December, to have any action taken, and dirtbag ales may very well have not been here, which is probably the most prominent business in our town limits at this point. So, let's recap the golf course thing. Of course, I've been personally trying to open it up. If you want to call it a personal agenda, you can. I don't know what personal agenda would be to open up green space for our citizens. I mean, Mike Mitchell might show up over there and walk the beautiful, beautiful green space that we pay twenty-four thousand dollars a year to cut the grass regardless it's been closed off for quite a while. So, everything you've read in U C W and previously, it's not true. I asked the owners, both owners, four times, did so-and-so contact you? Showed them the pictures. No, sir, they did not contact me. I, I learned of the situation. It is true that former Commissioner Konzie Collins gave me a phone call the day before and said, "Michael, one of the owners of the, of the parking lot would like to meet with you at your office. Would you be acceptable to that?" I said, "I will, but I'll have to let all my other fellow commissioners know. I'll have to let Town Attorney know." And Town Attorney also sent a draft. This is something that I didn't dream up. This is something that's been going on for four, five, six, eight months. We, over about a year ago, I made a motion that we walk these beautiful properties that we own that are not open to our citizens, and that was the three properties, Heritage Park, Lake Bed Number Two, and Old Golf Course, the front nine that we, I called it old front nine. I think it ended up being the back nine in the end. But anyways, the, the reports you're reading, I'm sorry, just were not true. U C W was wrong. I'm not going to put the owners in that trouble. They came of their own free will to my office. There was nobody twisting their arm. There was nobody coercing them. There was no duress. They'll tell you that today. This matter was discussed in closed session because it was, well, it's been discussed in closed session for a while because it's basically a lease of property for the town, not of-town property. And my fellow team right here already approved forty-eight hundred dollars a year by consensus if the owners would be willing to sign it. Now, we have not taken any official action. That official action is right now. And I can promise you, I have heard from my constituents, and there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of them, they're not going to come up here to this mic and get into this negative space that we call Town Board Meeting. I, I take exception to be called a felon. Man, for thirty-four years, I'm governed by a state board of CPA examiners. You think I've done something that is immoral or illegal? Please report to my state board. They'll thoroughly investigate it, and you'll see the answer to your question. Everything I've done up here, I congratulate this team right here because they started the process with the golf course parking lot. What I've told Town Manager Adams, that we all got to work together, we got to improve our communication, you know, you know, I'm number two man of Hope Mills. I've gotten six phone calls from the number one person in four years. We've got to work on communication. That's all of us. You know, it takes a village to get things done around here. And if you think those three items shouldn't have ever been approved, and that that's somehow not moving Hope Mills forward, please explain to me how it's not. I will also add that Commissioner Larson, we were told we couldn't get a temporary entrance to the golf course, and Commissioner Larson, at one of the D O T meetings, made a friendly request of one of the representatives. He said, "Sure, no problem. You can have a temporary entrance." And that's what happened. I don't know that I have the power to recognize you, Ms. Cooper.
Someone asked for us to explain to you how it's not right, and it's not right because you're not in the budget and you're spending more money on a plan we already have.
But we, we can't recognize you, Ms. Cooper, I'm sorry. Can't be, can't speak during a regular meeting, and we don't...
I'll just say that we want to spend twenty-eight thou, twenty-eight million on a, on a pool complex. Swamp dogs came one night, out of the blue, asked for a five million dollar complex, and our finance director said he could come up with half of it. It's in the minutes, it's on the video. Now, if he can come up with two and a half million for a stadium, why can't we come up with forty-eight hundred dollars to share a parking lot for a one-year period while we get a temporary entrance? Again, this is for, the citizens have already been enjoying the property that live congruent to the property, but there are people that like to drive over there and not be trespassing on the parking lot. So this gives us, you talk about collaboration, this is collaboration, this is partnering. That's what you all would like to hear, and that's what it is. And I make a motion that we approve the request.
Co-motion? Do we have any other discussion?
Mayor Warner?
Yes, ma'am.
I hadn't been contacted on it, but that's all right because I'm always opposed to it anyway. I think it's, if that's what the people want, I have not had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of calls. I don't have time to answer hundreds and, I don't even think my telephone would take that many. But I have had quite a few calls and had run into people in different areas I've gone into, and they think it's a shame to spend any money right now on anything that's going to be temporary. And we have so many other things that we're working on that has already been budgeted, and if we need any extra money, we need to go ahead and do it. But I'd like to see us go ahead and finish what we've already got started. And I know some people may be upset about it, but like they say, just right around the corner, there's another walking trail, and it's not like we're punishing them by not giving them something. It's just, and I know we still, I think he said twenty-four thousand dollars a year, we're still going to have to cut that grass. So I don't, I just don't understand it. So I will not go along with it.
Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I looked at the, the M O U, and I appreciate all the opportunities that's been done to bring this to the board. What I'd like to see, some language added to the M O U, especially with the termination of it, is like a thirty-day written notice by either party be added to the M O U because currently there's, there's nothing in there to talk about the termination in thirty days. The other, the other issue I have is, and this is the question, I guess, in the room, is the, is the golf course ADA accessible? If, and, and the reason I say this is because a lot of folks are talking about the golf course and are talking about using it and would love to enjoy it, but I also look at the liability to our town. Is the golf course ADA accessible? It's either yes, or it's no. And I asked that question again tonight. It has nothing to do with parking lot, it has nothing to do with the M O U or even the owners. It has all to do with the liability to our town that that walking track is ADA accessible. And I just want it on the record. It's either yes or no. And if it's yes, let's go with it. If it's no, then what do we need to do to make it ADA accessible? That's my question.
Can we have an answer?
Did Mr. Hartzog, didn't he not answer that in closed session last time when we were talking about the M O U? Based on the two studies, if we don't change any of the track, it does not trigger the coming into compliance with the bump outs because there is no slope from the parking lot to the track. And unless we add something, a bathroom, or a telephone booth, or whatever there might be that you would add, that would trigger the ADA accessibility with the slope, if it is just the golf cart track that is already there on the property, we are fine. And that's what we had discussed at least last time, but then we will have the other people that will be coming, but to sit and doing the ADA study. But the fact is, we need a driveway to get into our own property regardless. We don't have access... We don't have access to our own property. It's not, it's not an option to not have access to your property.
Oh, I agree with that.
They're only permitting us to use this parking lot for one year because they're planning on doing something themselves. So, we have to take this time to create access to our own property. In the meantime, people can use a pre-existing track that's already there. I don't know why people would deny the people of Hope Mills' access to their own property that they pay taxes on. I don't understand it. I'm a runner. I don't want to run around just the municipal park. It's not enough. There are a lot of other people that feel that way.
Therein lies your answer, that we've been breaking the law ourselves by going over that parking lot. We are a bunch of lawbreakers up here in Hope Mills.
Yep.
Is there, is the, there's a response to the ADA? Because I, from what I recall, I don't believe that Mr. Hartsock ever gave us a definite answer because I believe what he was given was information in a direct form, that this is the way it should be. And I don't ever remember hearing a direct answer from him. I do remember him saying that if we were aware of a need and we didn't take heed, then we were liable. And so, I guess my question now is to, who would be the one that could respond? I know that we've had staff look at the area up there. Is there a definite answer before, since there is a question on the floor from Commissioner Bellflowers and Commissioner Edwards in reference to that ADA accessibility?
I would have to look back at the closed session minutes to actually remember what exactly Attorney Hartsock said.
I'd like to poll the commissioners right now. What Attorney Hartsock said, I'd like to poll the commissioners.
Well, we have the attorney. Can?
She wasn't here.
I'm sorry. I can offer to contact Dan and ask him himself what was advised. He didn't brief me on this because I think he thought that it was closed. So, he doesn't, I don't think he has any new information.
Okay.
I'd like to poll the commissioners to see what was said. Attorney Hartsock said that he was cleared for the American Disabilities Act.
I just want it on the record. I just, I really do.
Individually polled.
I really do. I just want it on the record.
You start with you, Commissioner Bellflowers?
I want him to say that.
I'm asking for a poll. It's within my right.
What we talked about in closed session.
I want him to say that.
But do you remember what he said?
I'm asking to poll.
Well, that's what he asked you to do.
And that's my question, though.
What happened in closed session?
And I'm not trying to stop anybody from walking on it. I want to walk on it. But it's a liability issue. I just want to make sure. I think all of us do.
Everything's a liability.
All of us want to make sure that we can do this.
But it's a liability.
Then he was stepping on the sidewalk out there. You know, liability. If it's raining, it's a liability. You slipped and fall because somebody spilled a drink in the back room, it's a liability. We got liability all about it. That's what we have insurance for.
All right, there's a, their request is to?
Poll each individual commissioner.
Poll each individual, or do you want to go with your motion and go ahead and vote?
Well, I'd like to clear the air. I'd like to poll each individual commissioner about what happened in closed session.
All right, I'll start with Commissioner Legg.
It was my understanding that Commissioner Hartsock said it was okay if we used the golf course.
Okay. Commissioner Larson?
I concur with Mr. Legg.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem?
I concur.
Okay. Commissioner Edwards?
I was in that meeting, but I don't remember Dan Hartsock saying that, yeah, go ahead even though we didn't know for sure exactly what the ADA was all about. And I think, I think in his own way, he was cautioning us to be careful. I mean, he didn't tell us we couldn't vote on it, but he was cautioning us to be careful. That's the way I took it.
Commissioner Bellflowers?
It was my understanding that he didn't tell us we couldn't do it. I just wanted it on the record.
Okay.
Because that discussion was in closed session. This discussion is an open session. This discussion is here. And he didn't say one way or the other. He kind of led, to me, he kind of led us to believe that, yes, it was accessible. But I just wanted to make sure.
Madam Mayor?
Is that a yes, Commissioner Bellflowers?
Commissioner Bellflowers, in speaking with Mr. Hartsock today, he, I also asked if it was going to be appropriate for us to make the motion to remove the no trespassing signs with staff, and he said yes.
Okay.
So, I would think that if there was a liability issue, he would say?
He would have stopped.
Yeah.
I agree. Okay.
Find anything, Ms. Adams?
Can we call for vote?
She's looking through the minutes, I believe.
I'm looking through the minutes. The notes from the closed session on the 5th. The consensus was that Dan needed to give a final ruling on the ADA compliance.
That was on the 5th.
That was on the 5th. On the 19th, the understanding was that Mr. George was not willing to sign any improvement, any proposal, any MOU with any tenants. And Attorney Hartsock asked if there were any legal, any questions related to legal issues in this matter. Nobody had any further questions because it was perceived to be a dead issue.
Well, we do got recordings that are more detailed than the minutes. The minutes are basically a summary.
Yeah.
And the recordings that we have resumed tells the tale.
Okay. Okay, so, we want to, we're, we have a motion on the floor, and we don't have a definite answer in reference to the attorney. But we want to go forward with what we have, or do we want to contact Attorney Hartsock?
If you all would like me to do that, I can do that. And for the efficient conduct of business, you might want to table this while I do that.
Is that an agreement, or you want to go ahead and vote on your motion?
That's just a suggestion.
I will say that if you don't approve this tonight, you've killed it. You've killed all the collaboration, and you've killed any opening of that place to the citizens.
All right, so, you want to vote? All right, we have a motion on the floor. Mayor Pro Tem requests that we vote on his motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
I'm going with it.
Okay, motion passes.
I'm going with it. I mean, Commissioner Larson, you talked to him today. He said, "Take the signs down."
If the board would like that, that was one of the things that we had talked about.
Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion of Commissioner Larson's public records request of Bill Bowman's emails. The only thing that I would request is, I do believe if we're going to be discussing a private citizen, which Bill Bowman is, that he should be in attendance. I do not believe you should talk about anyone unless they're here to defend themselves. Now, as far as the mayor and my role, I have been, this has been an article in the newspaper by two different reporters. This has been on the radio by my attendance and by the commissioner's attendance. Every member of this board has seen these emails, along with everybody that's on any kind of social media because they have actually been photoshopped and put on in different places. So, there's been discussion community-wide. I do believe that this is another attempt to just put this back in the news again. I will gladly, I have in front of me, this is something that I think Bob Gorman put here for me, and I brought it up tonight. It says, "Don't worry about evil people who prosper or fret about their wicked schemes." Psalms 37:7. So, I'm, will sit here, and I will gladly accept the comments coming forth.
The reason I'm doing this is because it has not been on the public record yet for the town of Hope Mills. These emails were not seen by this board until August of 2019. So, if you are getting your news from a social media site or the Up and Coming, they have not been accurate with this. You can do the public records request. They're already pulled. You can see them for yourself. Now, one of the, some of the comments that have been made was why, why I wasn't running. And I gave my honest opinion of why I wasn't running. The paper came to me. I didn't come to them. The radio came to me. I didn't go to them. They asked for the emails. I provided them the emails. I would have scanned them and sent them to them, but my scanner was broken. So, I did go up to WFNC and give my emails. So, with that being said, I'm going to give a little timeline so people can understand how this all started. Because in July of 2017, the previous board approved the $28,000 for positive vetted news in the Up and Coming. I was not on the board. September 2017, the previous board's articles began. I was still not on this board. December, this board was sworn in in 2017. In January of 2018, a schedule in a PDF was mailed to this board, giving dates of when we would write articles and staff. And I made it very clear that I would not participate in creating a platform for reelection, or I thought that our staff should be taken out of their daily duties to write articles. The next minute I know, on February 15th, Up and Coming was here doing a presentation to us. Again, I told Up and Coming that I would not do it. It was not going to happen. This is February 5th, 2018. February 19th, the mayor is given a preview of the first article. We had been in office for a month and a half. And that was The Mouse That Roars. It was the one where I was a glamour girl, and I think Lisa Carter-Waring was no Connie Chung, and I was no Bob Gorman. And it went on to criticize the chatter people. Then you take that we went to March 3rd at the budget retreat, where the mayor told me I needed to get a thicker skin because I wasn't happy about the Up and Coming article, But we decided we'd honor this agreement, this gentleman's agreement that the town did with the Up and Coming. But we would not renew it when it came back up. March 19th, Mouse That Roared Part II came out, again, about Lisa Waring and myself criticizing the board, criticizing us, the chatter group. Now, it's pretty obvious that was a little retaliation because I didn't approve of the $28,000 being spent for vetted news. And I wasn't going to participate in it. All of these articles that have been slanderous, lies, misinformation in the Up and Coming and on that social media site have been previewed by the mayor and Commissioner Edwards on many of them. Commissioner Edwards never responded to any of them. The mayor forwarded information. She edited. She gave kudos of, "Wow, great article," as they were slamming this board and members of the community. Now, I'm sorry, but I have a dry mouth. I will say that maybe I'm not cut out for politics. Maybe I'm not cut out to sit next to people that lie or throw their fellow board members under bus. I don't hang around people like that. I'm not one of those people. I tell it like it is. Some people find it very harsh, but it's who I am. I've been honest with you all, whether you want to believe it or not. But I won't be bullied. I won't be bullied. And I won't let my fellow elected be bullied, and I won't let people in the community bully. I won't. And a former educator, we all know teachers preach about bullying because we see what happens to our children on a daily basis. This has nothing short than taking a publication and throwing this board under the bus. Jessie Bellflowers called a traitor to the uniform. Mayor Pro Tem, a blowhard that can't go a meeting without discussing a CPA. Commissioner Legg, a bobblehead, incoherent. What kind of people write that stuff about people? I mean, I'm, you know, the mind has always been over, I suppose I should come in a burlap sack and blacken my teeth out or something because that seems to be the big thing to glamour girls and glitter and I, you know, whatever. It's the most ridiculous mess. Sexist. Unbelievable. But I will not, I'm not going to do an emotion like a previous board did six weeks before an election. I won't waste $30,000 on that to throw someone out like they did Mr. Collins six weeks before because I believe in democracy. And I believe in letting the people decide who they want for their next mayor or their next commissioner. But again, I have chosen not to run because I'm not going to sit up and be a part of that kind of behavior. I'm just not. I love Hope Mills. The people have been great. This started a month and a half into office. There was no L S F. There was nothing other than me not wanting to spend $28,000 on vetted news like Hitler. You want positive news, do positive things. It's not hard. That was a waste. That was a waste. These emails were not part of that investigation with Lone Survivor. There were Bowman emails in there because they were associated with Lone Survivor. So, anything that had to do with that investigation was pulled. This happened before. A month and a half into office, how do you explain, "Wow, great article," as the slamming this board and citizens? How do you explain that?
Commissioner Larson, I will answer this in response so that you will know it's an editorial. An editorial that is written, the actual pages in the Up and Coming are articles about Hope Mills. Bill Bowman has his opinion. I am totally believe in.
Knew about it.
I knew about it, yes, after it was written. Ma'am, you are out of order. You're out of order.
Fire me.
I won't fire you. I'll ask you to be removed. Thank you. I knew about the article that was already pre-written, but if you will pay closer attention and read that, you will find that that article was written at the same time that there was concern about the Hope Mills chatter. And what had happened there, that article was also followed up by a concern about three to two votes on this board. And Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell was involved in quite a few of those conversations, and there was another one written about the Hope Mills chatter. Now, as mayor of Hope Mills, and as the knowledge that I've had, I did not write those articles. I did and was aware, I think you'll find two or three, but after that, that is his opinion. And what I shared with everybody is, your avenue as an elected official is to, you have to prove it wrong. I was told that. I have had to deal with the chatter and all the information on social media in reference to the Lone Survivor and my family. It has, I have got screenshots too. I have got information too that is detrimental. But the idea is, when you're elected, yes, you have to have a tough skin because there are going to be those that don't like you, and there's going to be those that will. Now, I hope that after this, this will be put to rest. I hope that this is, no, and I am, yes, running for reelection. Commissioner Larson isn't. And this will continue, I am sure, right on up to Election Day. So, I just beg your attention that this is what this is all about. It has been on the radio. It has been in the newspaper. And I will say no more. I appreciate the fact that she's brought this to your attention, and I appreciate that I've had the opportunity to respond. Anything else on our agenda that you'd like to discuss? Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
I'd like to say, this is really about control of our town. It's sad that Up and Coming Weekly, if you want to know how the citizens are embracing Up and Coming Weekly, go to one of the sponsored events. Now, I've been a member of the Hope Mills Chamber since 2003. I've stopped attending since the negative press came out. We know there was a libelous article, and we proved it was a libelous article about the approval of the bulkhead. It was full of lies, and it was meant to bring down Commissioner Bellflowers. There was four bids for the bulkhead. There was four bids for the bulkhead, the mayor's husband. He's not here to defend himself. But I'm talking about facts right now, real facts, that there wasn't one bid. There was five bids. One bid didn't meet their criteria, if I recall. Is that right, Town Manager Adams?
That's right.
Okay. So we took the little bid on that deal. There was never a retraction. Do you think there's a retraction in the UCW? Not going to happen. You think our town's going to move forward as long as UCW keeps writing negative editorials about our town? It's not going to happen. We all love Hope Mills, but you can't have, you can't have pretty positive information in the middle when you're slandering and tearing up the town in the fold. That's why we decided to end it. You know, you can't, you can't say I'm going to have positive articles in the middle, but then you've got a great big editorial on the front cover tearing us and ripping us a new one. That's all about control of our town. Now, last I checked, the citizens controlled this town. And we will find out on Election Day what the citizens think about all this behavior of the media and all the junk they talk. And we will find out. And that is the checks and balances. And then we can move forward. I would like the Up and Coming, if it didn't have the negative information. But any negativity is going to wipe out all positivity. One negative comment will wipe out 99 positive things. And we've got to get past that. You know, if you want to be Hope Mills newspaper, well, then you need to promote Hope Mills so that it can move forward in a positive manner. But you can't do it when you're talking smack every other week. You know, all you're doing, all you're doing is tearing the town apart. And you can put fact base all you want on a blog. We already had an issue tonight. I checked with those two owners. They said they never had a conversation with that reporter on her social media blog. Never had a conversation. Maybe the clerk did down at the store, but not the two owners, not the two principals. So we're, no matter who you vote for, if UCW is in this town and they got control of the town, if you want to go to one of his roundtable meetings where you've got eight to 10 people, I can have 50 people show up at a meeting if I want to talk about real business and economic growth. I sit on Economic Development Committees for the town, representing us proudly as a team. But I'm not trying to control it through private means or for whatever other reason. Those are your personal agendas. My personal agenda is the citizens of Hope Mills. It's pathetic. It's pathetic. That's all I can say.
Okay.
Mayor Warner.
Sir, you can't, we-
I did not have anything to do with Up and Coming. Don't have. I got my information off the public agenda. Right there, Mr. Bellflowers, I'll call it out now, reporting to you that the owners did not want to sign the agreement.
Point of order.
That's, Mr. McQueen, I'm sorry, you can't, Mr. McQueen.
I'm not accusing you.
Mr. McQueen, I'm sorry.
Not me.
Thank you. Yes. All right. Can we move forward? Can we move forward? Is there enough conversation on this?
Yeah, there's enough conversation.
Okay. All right. Next item on our agenda is our reminders. I'll let you read those. Committee Liaison Report. Well, first we'll have Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell with Historic Preservation Committee, Commission.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At our last meeting, we noted that the PAC Calder Awards were presented at our previous town board meeting, I believe it was, for 2018 and 19. They heard updates on the museum renovations, upcoming parish house electrical inspection. There you go. And Heritage Park Master Plan Meeting Schedule. The commission approved applying for a nonprofit 501(c)(3) Historical Society Corporation Order Expedite Fundraising Efforts. That has already been established. That is the Hope Mills Historical Society Incorporated. They decided to forego a yard sale and to concentrate on selling T-shirts and bricks for fundraisers. Discuss possible historical logos. They discussed the 12th Annual Mill Village Reunion to be held in Town Hall Building in conjunction with Old Mill Days. And they decided to once again pursue construction of a mural as many of the previous legal ramifications may have been resolved. That's all I had on that, Madam Mayor. And the, um, the other committee, the Municipal Advisory Committee did not meet. We had that joint meeting a while back with everybody involved.
Okay. Next, Commissioner Edwards and the Lake Advisory Committee and the Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Council.
Lake Advisory Committee only meets every quarter. We didn't have one last month. Mid-Carolina will be meeting Thursday, so I'll give you an update.
Next meeting, okay. Commissioner Legg, the Appearance Committee and the Festival Committee.
Yes, the Appearance Committee met last month, and they're working on, uh, creating decorations of flags and ribbons and things for the Christmas holiday season. And I've missed the last two, uh, Festival Committee meetings. And one of them was the death of a good friend of mine and the other one, while we were in here tonight, so is appropriate if I ask. Mr. Mitchell?
Sure.
Mr. Mitchell, can you fill us in, sir? I'm sorry, but I was here.
Well, tonight, we didn't have too many people show up, but we didn't have enough for a quorum. But what we did do, um, looking at the schedule and the tightness of it, that we had to scratch and postpone some events. So that information will be forthcoming with Megan, which was there. And she would be updating everyone once she talked to the parties involved to make sure that we meet the requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Next, we have Commissioner Bellflowers with Veterans Committee and Rulak.
Thank you, Mayor. Veterans Committee did not meet this month, or not this month, August. Let me go with that one. But we are meeting at the end of this month. And also, in two weeks, there'll be another meeting for Heroes Homecoming. And the full schedule is about to be released and for the events that are coming up in November. And that'll be shared with all the local media later on at the end of the month. Rulak did meet, uh, August 15th. And there was a presentation from Three Rivers Land Conservatory, a merger with Sand Hills Land Trust. Travis Morehead, Executive Director, was a very robust executive presentation with a lot of slides. It was very informational. Some joint land use study implementation projects were also discussed from Benchmark Planning. The new Rulak Executive Director was named, and there was an address by Mr. Pete Campbell, who is now the new Executive Director. The minutes were approved and the financial reports for July was approved. And the next Rulak meeting is Thursday, November 21st, 2019. And that's the report, Mayor.
Okay. My Youth Leadership Committee will be started, instead of that October 7th start, probably need to move it to the next meeting in October because of the early meeting so that we can do a regular meeting and back it up to 6th on that night. The Youth Leadership Committee is made up of members of student bodies from Southview, Grace Creek, and Jack Britt. And they meet once a month and are going to be actively involved this year with our Festival Committee. I too, uh, meet with Heroes Homecoming, and we are finalizing, we have one last meeting, we're finalizing all the events. And we are very active here in Hope Mills, and those will be coming out. They'll actually bring probably home from the next meeting, uh, the information and the actual agenda for what's happening. I'm also have been appointed to the Mid-Carolina Legislative, uh, Legislature as a delegate for our community. I share that role with Ms. Ayers, who is representing Stedman area. I will have my training on September the 12th. And then October 1st and 2nd, I'll actually be in Raleigh. And this role will be to work with our members all across the state to determine what are the important issues relative to senior citizens. And then also being an active group that will lobby our, uh, House members and our Senate members. And I'm looking forward to that because I am one now. And the other thing I think is important, that we had a meeting, a first meeting with Historic Society. And what I think is important about that is that committee is going to work to raise funds to help offset some of the cost of the things that are happening with the History Museum. And I was very pleased that I could attend that first meeting and very proud of the fact that it is a community effort to start doing some fundraising. And that's all I have for the evening. Staff comments? Miss, do you have any staff comments? Ms. Adams?
No.
Do you have any comments? No. Thank you for being here this evening, and thank you for being for both meetings. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Official comments? I'll start with-
I've got a point of order issue.
Okay.
Were we supposed to do a budget amendment on that MOU?
We'll bring one back to you.
To the next board meeting?
Yeah, we can do that at the next meeting.
That'll be effective today? Okay.
I have it already for you.
The budget amendment? Oh, the, oh, the MOU?
No, it's a signed agreement.
Okay. I've got their contact information, and I'll just give it to you, Deliver, that's fine.
All right. Commissioner Bellflowers.
Appreciate everybody coming and the six people that spoke. My, I do have a question about City View Magazine Breakfast on Thursday. I didn't know if the board knew about that. It's Thursday morning. Many of us were there. In fact, all of us were there at the last one, uh, down in Highland. And there was three great speakers that's going to talk. And it's a very informative breakfast, and it's pretty well attended. So I'm just going to ask if anybody wanted to go, I guess.
Jane and I did not receive anything, or we would have forwarded it to you all, but we can certainly make arrangements if the board would like to attend.
Further.
Is it, is Thursday morning?
Thursday morning.
What time?
7:30.
7:30. Yeah, you were there at the last one. We're all were there except-
Normally, we get, they send an invitation.
Is it too late, uh, RSVP or?
No, I believe so.
She can make contact if you want to go.
Are y'all sitting with the town? Y'all sitting with the town?
No, we're not going.
You're not going? You going, Mayor?
I'm going, but I've already made arrangements because I've had information about it. At one of my other meetings, I got the information.
Does anybody from, does anybody else want to go? I mean, I want to go, but I'm not.
I can go.
I'm not going to go. Settle on, unless-
I'll go.
If it's not too late.
If there's no problem with that, I'll go. Where is it, Mr. Bellflowers?
Highland.
So three of you? Mr. Legg and-
Okay. Is it 7:30 this Thursday? Okay.
Yeah, this Thursday, yeah. And Economic Development is always discussed there and what's happening in the, you know, in the short term and long term of our community. It's very informational, truly is. Lastly, Mayor, I want to say something. I apologize tonight for the heated discussion that many of you sit in those chairs and listen to. We're better than the discussion we had here tonight. Sometimes, you've got to take that laundry out, you've got to hang it up on the lines, and you've got to put pins on it, regardless of what it looks like. But I'd like to apologize to all the citizens for this heated discussion that we had here. And hopefully, there is clear, and I hope-
It's over with.
That it stops here. But I hope. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes, I would like to make a comment. I'd like to clear the air also. Hope Mills is a wonderful, beautiful place, and the people in it is fantastic. I think, and I really believe that anything we do, whether it be the Lone Survivor, the golf course, Swamp Dogs coming in, or anything else that we want to participate in, that the citizens need to give the input. It should not be up to us. We're here for the taxpayers. And I think anything we do involving budget or the money that's spent, the citizens should be involved. And I think things would go a lot better if more citizens would get involved instead of listening to rumors and hearsay and not finding out for themselves. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I'd like to thank the staff for all the work for the hurricane preparedness. We dodged a bullet this time, hopefully. There won't be no more bullets coming at us. I've personally experienced two of those hurricanes and damage to my own home.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, but we were lucky that we didn't lose everything, like so many of our residents have been decimated in this area in Lumberton. And Fort Nichols, South Carolina, I think, has been completely wiped out at this point. And it is sad that we had to go through an emotional meeting tonight. But, um, I think we all get caught up a little bit too much with the social media, whatever side of the fence you sit on. Pick up the phone. Call me. My cell phone's everywhere. Come meet with me. Come speak with me. Come speak with your other elected. We're open people. We're not ugly, rude, mean people. We're nice people. I wouldn't be successful if I wasn't nice, you know? I didn't come from, I came from nothing. I mean, I came, I came from a little house on Rose Hill Road. My parents had no money for college. I worked my way through college. But I didn't get to where I am by being mean to people, you know? You know, I'm a little disappointed sometimes. I hear the negative comments, but then people are nice to me. And when people need my money, they come ask for a donation. And I turn the cheek and I write a check because at the end of the day, it's about helping the citizens. And just because citizens don't stand up at that podium, you know, I think there's a false sense of who's controlling the town. I think you'll find out who controls the town on November the 5th. So, um, you know, just keep, everybody needs to keep their head high and remember this is Hope Mills, and we'll get through all this. And we'll get through the negative media articles somehow, one way or another. And we'll find a way to move on. But thank you for your patience with us.
Commissioner Larson?
Thanks, everyone, for coming out. I, unlike maybe my, some of my elected, I don't apologize for the heated discussion because I think it should have been out there. I think people, you have the right to know the truth. Sometimes it's ugly, but it needs to get out there. We are elected by the people, and our job is to watch over, fiscally, over the town. So there are requirements by law that require input from the community on every dollar spent on certain things. And then there's others where we're elected to make those decisions that we think are best for the town. And that's what we try to do. But I don't apologize for doing what I did. I've been on a whipping post since February of 2018, and I'll gladly stay on it until the very end. If it means giving the truth to the people, I'm okay with that, and I'll do it. But I appreciate you all coming out.
Commissioner Legg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not going to apologize because I don't think I have anything I need to apologize for. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this evening. I think sometimes if we'd put some, as much energy in doing the right things for the town as we do the negative things, we'd be a whole lot further ahead. But I'm not criticizing nobody, okay? The carpet looks great in here. Good job. Thank you, Katie, for coming down. Thank you for coming, sitting with us. I'd like to thank the staff, the Fire and Police Department, everybody that had anything to do with the preparation for the hurricane. She's gone. No damage here. Hunter, go. I didn't even hate to see her leave. Talked to the mayor a little bit and the town manager this past week, and some people in Lamarcos' office. I want to bring something up, and I understand it possibly may be on the next agenda, about a formula for the way we can rent our vacant ball fields out, that they'll bring us in some, a little bit of money. They're bringing us nothing now, just sitting there. So if we can rent them out, where we can make it affordable for people to come in and rent those ball fields by the hour, by the day, then that's a little bit of money we can put back in our Parks and Rec program. So if we can get that squared away, I've got some information on it that Stephen gave me today. So if it's on the agenda, I guess everybody will get some information on it, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, yeah. I mean, we're just learning to get away from us.
He emailed me as well with the information.
Okay, good. So thanks again for everybody for being here, uh, all the staff, all your hard work. I know you wasn't mad about the extra day off of the carpet though, but, but I guess they'll get that finished, and I hope it all looks as good as this does. So everybody have a good week. If you need anything- But anyway, give me a call if I can do anything for you. Good to see everybody again out here this evening. Thanks for coming out.
I too would like to apologize to our community and those that are watching us on TV right now because this was an item that really shouldn't have been placed on the agenda. But it was there and once it was there, then even those of us that have a very tough skin, if you get emotional and caught up in it, sometimes you respond. So I too would like to say hopefully we can move forward and the, the conversations that we have here at this meeting will be town-centered. Things that are important to our town as we move forward, the business of the town. And just know that, uh, as mayor of Hope Mills, that I am every day somewhere trying to do something to help our town prosper. And I appreciate your being here tonight and I appreciate those of you that spoke tonight. And I do hope that we can move forward after this evening. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you and thank you for being here.
Thank you.